Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, July 20th, 2020 Upper Providence Board of Supervisor meeting. I am calling this meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
The Pledge Allegiance is to fire of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with every day and justice for all.
Okay, so this meeting is a little bit of a high bread. So you'll see all of us here in the Zoom call. And then we have all of our residents out on, they have to dial in and make comments through Zoom. So we're doing a little bit of a high bread on this one. So the first agenda item is a motion to approve the board agenda. Has everyone had the opportunity to look that over?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now it's public comment. And I'm going to turn that over to Tim. Is there anybody waiting to make a public comment?
Yeah, for those people out in cyberspace, we have a number of people registered. If you're interested in making a public comment, please hit the virtual hand, and I'll see your hand, and we'll unmute you, and you can give your public comment. So I'll give everybody a few seconds. I have here Betsy Daly. Betsy, can you hear me?
I just lost it again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're trying to figure this out here.
You can only use one computer, Betsy. It's causing feedback.
Yeah, I know. Did you get it, Dan?
No.
All right, Dan, go in here now, please. Steve, I sent you some pictures that are all...
I muted her.
This is going to be fun.
Betsy, if you can unmute, and then we can hear your comments. Betsy, go ahead.
Are you okay? Can you hear me now?
I'm fine. I can hear you now. Go ahead.
I'm going to give it to Dan, because Dan really wanted to talk to you.
Hi. I'm Daniel Daly. I live at 257 Canal Street in Port Providence. And I just would like to make Upper Providence Township aware of the destruction of the open space field along Canal Street. It's getting ruined. And I don't know what else to do. We tried to grow grass there. We failed. But I think that the township needs to look at this. It's a problem. And I'm just trying to make you aware that there is a problem. If you could put it on a schedule, or have, you know, Tom Broadbent, or whoever takes care of that, come down and look at it, and make some kind of a plan on, we're losing the field. And the bank of the canal is in turmoil. And I think it's all because of all the extra parking. It's a zoo down here on the weekends. And that's really all I have to say.
I think, Betsy, did the board members see the pictures? She said, John, do you know where she's talking about? Is that?
Is that near the Fitz?
Yes, next, right next to the restaurant.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that township property?
I think it is, I think part of it is township property. We can, we can go out and check it. We just got this like less than an hour ago, so.
And this is Betsy Daly, 257 Canal Street. I just want to also make a comment that it's a dangerous situation. Yesterday was a perfect example. We had our grandchildren over for the first time in months, and a car was coming into the area to park to use the canal. And they literally wouldn't stop to let the kids walk across the, what has now become a road inside the field. So it is very dangerous. And, you know, it does not definitely need to be looked at. It would be appreciated if you could look at it.
Betsy, can I ask you a question? What do you think a solution could be?
Well, I would love to see the area that is owned by the township to be marked off, maybe in the fall, to, you know, bring in some, reseed the area and try to make it as much of a field again, green field again. And just keep it marked off, so that people can't park there. There are trailheads at the end of Port Providence Road that some spots stay empty, you know. And then there are other areas that people can park. So unfortunately, that's what I think needs to happen there. You just need to reestablish the field, so that people are not parking willy-nilly wherever they want. And that would be the best-case scenario, I think.
So you're, so you're, I'm just trying to understand. So you're suggesting that we don't allow parking there, but they park on the street?
There's no spots.
But there's no spots on the street?
No, not on the street either. If you had an opportunity to see the two pictures that I sent you, I have quite a few more. But those two were basically fronting your property, our property, as an Upper Providence resident. And the street, Canal Street, I'm sure you know, isn't a very narrow street to begin with. It is one way going one way, and one way going the other way, as far as cars coming and going. If we had a fire, if we needed an ambulance, you know, that type of thing, I think we would be in trouble. Because there are times when you can't get up and down the street due to so much traffic. It's not the bar, and it's not necessarily the boat business. It's just people using the canal. And, you know, they're parking and taking over the entire field, which at one point was a beautiful, green, open field that was well-maintained, and well-used by the neighbors, by the people that live along Canal Street. So that's, that's really the issue. All I'm asking you is to be aware of it. Also, to possibly, you know, when it is, when it's a good time to do this, as far as the growing seasons are concerned, is to take a look at it, and see if there's something that can be done there. We're not the only ones that are concerned about it. There are, the entire neighbors along the entire street are concerned about it. And we do have a very young family living on the street, who at any given time, if their children were to run out into the street accidentally, they, you know, they'd be taking their lives into their hands at certain times on the weekends. So that is, that is really where this stems from, is that this is a concern. Sometimes it does get dangerous, in the sense that there are cars coming and going, and people don't pay attention to the speed limit. You know, so there are other issues besides just the field. It is the entire capacity of Canal Street is being overrun. And it's unfortunate, because of everything that's going on right now. But, so we're asking you to, if you could, take a look at it, and see if there was something that you could do to reestablish the open space, and to make the neighborhood, Canal Street, a little bit safer for everyone that lives along Canal Street.
All right. Thank you, Betsy and Dan. And I know Chief Toomey's going to have someone look into it tomorrow, and even over the weekend. I think we should take a look at when the problem really arises. I'm sure the weekends are far higher traffic.
Madam Chair, I have Tom Broadbent on. Tom, can you hear me?
Yes, for me to...
Yeah, go ahead. I think you had some comments on that.
I did. I could actually go down there and probably post it with no parking signs on both sides, maybe to help that a little bit. And then maybe the chief and I can talk about enforcement of it, how we want to do that down the road. But I agree, it's a mess. I saw it last week.
Thank you. That would, that would be appreciated. That's a start, and that would be very much appreciated, and welcomed. I do know that.
I think I'm going to have to recuse myself from any conversation on this, because I'm still directly related to what's going on at the restaurant there. So I don't think it would be fair for me to be discussing this, so.
Tom will be in touch tomorrow. Is that tomorrow, Maury? Hey, Betsy, will you be there tomorrow? Are you available tomorrow?
I am working back in the building, back at school. So I am at work. But Dan should be here.
Okay.
You know where we live. So Dan should be here, and he can certainly point out what needs to be pointed out, and work together with you to hopefully, you know, start to solve the problem, or at least start to address the problem. That would be good.
Very good. We'll have somebody out to speak to your husband tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
YouTube link, audio check. YouTube link, audio check.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
Just asking our registrants in cyberspace, if anybody wants to speak under public comment, they can raise their hand. I don't see any more, Madam Chair, so we can move on.
All right, there's no executive session to report on, so we'll move on to the approval of the bill list for June 10th, 2020 to July 10th, 2020, in the amount of $926,143.76. Has everyone had an opportunity to look that over?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill list from June 10th, 2020 to July 10th, 2020, in the amount of $926,143.76.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This passes. Sorry. Okay, the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, June 15th and July 6th, 2020. One's regular meeting on June 15th, and then we had a workshop meeting on July 6th. Has everyone been able to take a look at the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 15th, 2020 regular meeting, and the July 6th, 2020 workshop meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, old business. Consider authorizing the Township Manager to execute the Monco 2040 grant agreement, award agreement for the municipal complex Schuylkill River Connector Trail.
This paperwork is all in order from the county. What we need to do now is, we just simply need the board's authorization to execute this. This is, will help defray the cost of the Schuylkill River Trail. Mr. Dingman's office was very helpful in helping us secure this grant. And I think it's on schedule. So we just need official approval tonight.
I'll make a motion to authorize Township Manager to execute the Monco 2040 grant award agreement for the municipal complex slash Schuylkill River Connector Trail.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. But I know Al has a question.
I have a question. I know, Mr. Dingman, we're still doing engineering work on that. Do we have any kind of a sketch drawing that we can see where this is going? We have an idea. But again, we're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, haven't seen where it's going, and what it could possibly look like. I know it's going to come right across the street here. But, but do we have anything? Yes, thank you. And I will forward it to the township in the morning, and you share it with everybody. That's, we need these things. Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, what's the timeline then? You said fall beginning? It's okay. He said yes. Okay.
All right, next agenda item, consider adopting amended resolution 2020-29, approving the Providence Town Center 106 Sewerage Facilities Module. Do we have anything to discuss on this?
This is the sewer facilities module. Just go up to the mic.
You have actually adopted this module either a month ago, or two months ago, I forget the exact timeframe. But the DEP required a re-advertising of the module by the applicant for public comment. And that public comment period is now concluded. And so you need to re-adopt it if you send it back down to DEP. It's for the Providence Town Center project. Any questions?
Do we know, was there, was there any significant public comment on it after?
There were no public comments. Part of the response is to say that there were no public comments.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended resolution 2020-29, approving the Providence Town Center-106 Sewerage Facilities Module.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, new business. All right, consider adopting resolution 2020-31, extending the COVID-19 emergency declaration through August 17th, 2020. We've been doing this every month now, right? I mean, a month by month.
Yeah, this is in no way dissimilar from the previous months. It allows us to remain eligible for any funding should it come through in the future for the period through August 17th, when the declaration would be extended.
So could we, we can only extend this out monthly? It almost seems like we should just do six months and be done.
You pick the date, and we'll fill in the blank. We've been doing it monthly, just because the board meets monthly.
Okay.
Can we change it now? Want to make a modification now?
Any reason not to do more than 30 days, Joe?
The original thinking was that it was a little more nimble if you were going in 30-day increments, so that if it changed from the governor's standpoint, you wouldn't be extended out further. But if you just say in the motion that it never extends beyond the state's declaration, I think you can put it whatever length you want to.
I didn't want to be a pessimist and put, you know, January 30th.
Yeah, I get you. We're always hopeful. Maybe in August, it'll be different. We can change it, and change it for the next month. Okay.
All right.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-31, extending the COVID-19 emergency declaration through August 17th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, consider adopting resolution 2020-32, approving the Tindy Run Sanitary Sewer Planning Module.
Thank you. This is the Tindy Run Sewer Planning Module, which serves approximately 120 homes. Fruit Farm, Old State Road, Rosemont, that area. We've had several discussions about it. It includes the standard $10,000 assessment per property owner. It's an estimated $7 million project. We're looking at probably going construction in 2021. There's 13 easements, 13 property owners that we need easements from. So that's usually the critical path in terms of where we're going, in terms of timeframe. Environmental work's been done, preliminary design work's been done, survey work's completed. This step gets it down to DEP, for their blessing. Probably be a 60 to 90-day turnaround on DEP's part before we'll have an approved planning module. And then we need to submit for the Part II construction permit, obtain the easements before the project can actually go out to bid for construction.
So out of the 120 homes, and I think we went over this before, how many people have signed up or agreed, they're all, they're all signing, they're all hooking up to sewer?
They, they may hook up. They don't, they're not required to hook up.
Right.
They may hook up. This will provide sewer to their property. They have the ability to hook up.
Okay.
But your, your current policy is that, not a requirement. That's the way the module was advertised. There were no public comments received.
That's correct. That's correct.
We did get comments from the Montgomery County Health Department, Montgomery County Planning Commission, the Township Planning Commission, and have addressed those comments.
Do we know how much interest there is? Has anybody surveyed the neighborhood?
We've not, we have not formally surveyed the neighborhood. I have, I have a log that Dante, the former Assistant Public Works Director, kept over the years. And he has, he had noted information about a letter received in 2010 or 2011 from 30 residents that were interested in connecting, that expressed an interest in sewer. There've probably been 15 more that came in over the years to public, at various public meetings, and inquired about it. I spoke with the homeowner of the largest, I'm sorry, the president of the largest homeowners' association there. He expressed to me that many, I don't know how many it is, but many of the residents in the HOA had talked about sewer, and wanted the availability to connect.
So construction next summer sometime? When, when did you think?
Probably late summer, fall, I would suspect.
A year, a year project roughly?
It'll be approximately one-year project to construct. Correct. Includes a pump station down along the Pico power line, behind the Providence Pond, Pond, that you don't own. Well, I guess the plan there shows it now. It's like, so the pump station's in the left side of that plant.
On the left side, okay.
Along Iroquois Drive. Access will be off at Iroquois Drive for the pump station. The green lines are the public sewer lines.
Okay, so that would make three pumping stations in our town, right?
That would be three publicly-owned pump stations.
Okay.
First one in 50 years.
Really? Okay, that's great.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2020-32, approving the Tindy Run Sanitary Sewer Planning Module.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, consider adopting resolution 2020-33, granting tentative land development approval for 124 Yerkes Road, Silver Rhino.
Who's the person that's supposed to be talking?
Jeff, should it be Joe or Allison?
Is Allison Zarozan on?
Allison Zarozan, but I don't see her. Here she is.
Hi, good evening. I wasn't sure how we were going to do this. I am here, and I'm happy to give the board a presentation, unless Jeff has remarks that he'd like to make first.
No.
I can, I can go ahead if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead, Allison.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're here this evening regarding a tentative sketch plan for 124 Yerkes Road and 1806 Collegeville Road. As several of the board members are familiar with, we were here, we've been here and shown you sketch plans previously for this project. And this project went through a rezoning process. It is currently zoned Yerkes Smith's youth district. And that was adopted by this board late last year. Since that time, we had filed an updated tentative sketch plan in February, which reflects the final version of the Yerkes Smith's youth district requirements. And we have, during sort of the COVID slowdown, we've met with staff on Zoom, worked through comments, and cleaned up plans, and resubmitted them. So the plan today is generally the same plan that you've seen previously. There are three multifamily buildings proposed on the property, consisting of a total of 224 dwelling units. There are 381 parking spaces, which equates to 1.7 parking spaces per unit. There are two access points shown on the plan. The main one being the intersection of Collegeville Road and Hopwood Road. That intersection will be signalized. And there are extensive road improvements proposed along the 29 Carter in connection with this. The plan still shows, and continues to show, a trail connection through the site to the Perkeomen Trail. The trail connection also goes across Collegeville Road, and extends up Hopwood Road. We did receive several review letters from your consultants. We have one from Gilmore and Associates dated May 29th, 2020. One from Grace Planning Associates dated March 23rd, 2020, which I note is a review of the first plan we had submitted this year. We have a review letter from McMahon specific to the tentative sketch plan dated June 8th, 2020. And we have a, an updated review letter from McMahon pertaining to the traffic impact, or the transportation impact assessment dated July 6th, 2020. I note that that last letter pertains to both the Hopwood development and this development, and the Hopwood development is not before you this evening. We did appear before the Planning Commission at its meeting on July 8th to discuss the application. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application. There was one point, as it relates to connections through the site and sidewalk, that we did discuss in detail with the Planning Commission. The tentative sketch plan that's before you tonight shows an extension of the sidewalk on both sides of Route 29, as well as down along the property frontage on Yerkes Road. We had discussed with the Plan Commission that it may make sense to, in order to further encourage the public to utilize the trail connection that we're showing through the site, to not necessarily extend sidewalk on the property frontage, except in the area where the trail connection is shown, and to the parking area that is shown along Collegeville Road. It was also expressed that sidewalk may be appropriate on the other side of the street, which is the undeveloped portion of the property, in order to provide sidewalk in that area. The site will be connected to public sewer and water, and the existing buildings on it will be demolished as part of this proposal. The buildings still are proposing to have green roofs, and be compliant with environmental design, either Green Globes, or something of that sort. There's still community space shown in one of the buildings. And the plan also meets the open space and rec requirement for the district, and under the subdivision and land development ordinance. So at this point, we'd be happy to entertain questions. I do have, I do believe also participating are Lance Silver, as well as our civil engineer from BEI.
I don't, I don't have a plan here in front of me, so I'm going by what I remember. Can you address the wetlands again, if you would, please? How far down do they go? Also, what your intention is for utilization of that other house on the other side of the creek?
Sure. So there are, there was a jurisdictional determination completed for the site. There is also flood plain on the site, as you note. Generally speaking, that's along the portion of Noddy Brook that runs through the site. The, there is a detailed FEMA flood study that's being completed, that will be submitted to the township, and that will be reviewed by Gilmore and Associates. submitted to the township, and that will be reviewed by Gilmore and Associates. We are not proposing to retain any of the existing buildings on the property, so including the existing house that was along Route twenty-nine, that would be removed. I don't know if I'm answering your question, because you're right, it's hard to sort of understand without a plan in front of us.
Yeah, I was fortunate enough to sit in on, on the July eighth meeting and remember the question about the sidewalk, and I, and I understand that you're gonna put sidewalks on the property that you're developing, your property, but if they end at the property line and, and don't connect up to anything, they're not much good. I get very excited about people not having to start a car and being able to walk from their home to the trail. It would be nice if we, if, if we could have a sidewalk extend across the front of the Perkeomen Woods property, up to the commercial sidewalks there at the Wawa and, and that commercial property there at, at the Collegeville Line. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, I have another question also. You, you obviously have gotten your letter from PennDOT. I, I assume that you don't have any issues with what they're requiring of you?
No, we, we are able to comply with PennDOT's comments, and our traffic engineer, which is also BEI, is continuing to work with McMahon to address those comments as we get into further detailed engineering design. Those comments will be further addressed, but yes, generally speaking, we're, we're fine with, with what's been reviewed.
Have Lance Silver who wants to speak?
I was just going to chime in on the wetlands, but Allison covered it, so.
So we just want to be clear, Joe, the next step, and I know we talked about this before, but I want everyone to know, can you just tell us in a linear fashion what, how this would be processed from moving forward?
Yep, this is tentative sketch, which generally means they haven't even really fully engineered it yet. When they get tentative sketch approval, typically the developer will, at that point, engage in full engineering. This case, there's some overlap, because we did ask a lot of them in connection with the zoning change. But as a general statement, this is a very early stage, and then the critical stage is preliminary approval, which will be, the next stage, there'll be another round of review letters. We'll probably receive whatever waiver requests they have, and that'll also be a time to discuss some things that we might be looking for from them. And then, there's another step after that, which is final approval, where we dot all the i's. So this is very early and conceptual, and that's why there's not, not a lot of, not as much detail as you'll see at the preliminary stage.
And in between this and the preliminary stage, they go to the Planning Commission?
Well, they've been to the Planning Commission for tentative, and they'll, when they submit the new application for preliminary, they'll go back there for them to look at that.
And we'll get a report from them?
Yep.
Okay.
And of course, all your other consultant reviews and the county. I think the county doesn't usually do tenet, sketch, but they'll, they'll have a review on the preliminary.
Thank you.
Sure.
The, the height of these buildings, are they within our code, Jeff?
Yes. Sorry.
Yeah, John, that was actually asked the Planning Commission, and they are.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to adopt Resolution 2020-33 granting tentative land development approval for one twenty-four Yerkes Road, parentheses, Silver Rhino.
I'll second it. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, next agenda item, consider adoption of Resolution 2020-34 for PennDOT approval for improvements to add left turn lanes and realign signal head number one on South Trap Road, one thirteen.
Good evening. So, this is essentially one of those forms that require your authorization for Tim to execute to board along to PennDOT. In this case, this is an intersection, one thirteen Black Rock Road and Jaeger Road, where the township has been waiting for PennDOT to do a surface treatment project for some years, so that we could get left turn lanes striped at the intersection. PennDOT has now advanced that project, they have a consultant on board, sent plans to the township for our review. We were allowed to give some input there. They're going to essentially stripe left turn lanes on one thirteen, they're gonna leave about five to six foot shoulders that could be used for bikes, et cetera, to maintain through that intersection. It's unknown when they're gonna actually complete the actual project, but this allows for the signal permit plan to be modified, to have the left turn lanes on the signal plan. It requires one of the signal heads to be relocated. And the one missing piece, which Tim is going to be sending a letter to PennDOT if he hasn't already, is to ask PennDOT to complete a study of warrants to get the left turn signalization, so we can get the arrows up there in addition to having the lanes. The lanes will be good for protection, but then the, PennDOT will complete that, probably when we get a little bit more back to normal here, and there's more people traversing that area. So that's what this is for.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's a real positive thing, and I know that Tom Broadbent is super excited about this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-34 for PennDOT approval for improvements to add left turn lanes and realign signal head number one on South Trap Road, parentheses, Route one thirteen.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, consider authorizing advertisement of ordinance five eight three for financial planning.
Madam Chair, this document was prepared by bond counsel. As you recall, when you do a refinancing or any bond issue, you have to advertise the ordinance, and it's advertised until, we act on it until August. I think it's a sixty day period, so we need to get this at least authorized for advertisement. Then we will actually act on this ordinance in August. And, Joe, do you have anything else you wanna add to that?
This is all what we discussed in our workshop, right?
Yes. Authorizing advertisement.
Great.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that can advertise ordinance five eighty-three authorizing the incurrence of debt by the issuance of a general obligation bond.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, consider setting a date and time for public hearing to consider request from Polte Homes for zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment for the property at seventeen oh one Main Street.
Yeah, Joe Coles.
Am I unmuted? Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, my name's Joe Coles, I'm here on behalf of Polte, and Mr. Kieferman, we forwarded a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if you're able to bring that up and show it to the board?
Up the PowerPoint screen.
Okay, if you could go to the next slide, please? Okay. That is the site, which is the subject of our consideration this evening. It's a twenty-three acre site, it's at seventeen oh one Main Street, approximately twenty-three acres, very near Main Street's intersection with Panapac. I don't wanna go into too much detail on the history of this proposal, because I think a lot of you are quite familiar with it by now. We've been quite a number of months discussing the potential development of this site with the township. And it's a rather unique parcel, it has limited frontage along the road in light of its size, and the frontage that it does possess is very environmentally sensitive. With me this evening is Mr. Tim Woodrow, he's our site design engineer, and if at any point in time anyone would like some elaboration from him, he's available to answer your questions. But the bottom line is that we came to you with a proposal for development of this site as residential about two years ago, a little over two years ago. And Mr. Kieferman, if you could go to the next slide for us, please? Mr. Kieferman, are you on the next slide?
Okay, okay. Is that the right slide, Joe?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I apologize, guys, I, I'm unable to see the PowerPoint except for just a moment when Mr. Kieferman changes slides. But this second slide that you have up before you is a zoning map. And you'll see the site again depicted on the zoning map, and what the applicant is requesting is that the property be rezoned to R2, which is abutting the property, as you can see in a number of spots. The R2 is that light yellow, sort of that creamy yellow color. And the proposal would involve some modifications to your existing cluster ordinance and a map change to R2. I believe the township has for a while been mindful of some changes that might be appropriate to the cluster ordinance, and the applicant is proposing that we accomplish those in connection with the map change, so that a residential development can be realized on the property. And what we first came to you with was a townhouse development of about a hundred units. Mr. Kieferman, can you go to the next slide for us, please? Okay, and there you see that development that was essentially spread the entire site except for the environmentally sensitive areas. We received a recommendation from your Planning Commission to move forward with that project. But before we got there, and before we came to you, and this is about a year and a half ago now, we modified the proposal to what you will see in the next slide, if you would, Mr. Kieferman. We believed, and we had reason to believe based on some comments that we had along the way, that the township might be interested in some park area out in front of this parcel. So that's what we proposed next, with about the same number of units, about a hundred townhouse units, and a park towards the front of the property. We went to the county with this proposal, we went to the local Township Planning Commission with this proposal, and although the local Township Planning Commission recommended approval, the county issued a letter, and I think it's fair to say, although they acknowledged that residential made sense on this site, they were not happy with the plan. We did move forward with a public hearing before you, the Board of Supervisors, back in April of 2019, and I think it's fair to say that you shared the same sentiments as the county did regarding this plan, you didn't like it. I think everyone recognized, and I don't wanna speak for anybody, we can all go back and look at that April 2019 video of that meeting, but it seemed clear to me that there was acknowledgement that residential made sense on this site, but that the plan was not desirable, no one liked the plan. And so we went back to the drawing board, and we are currently proposing what you'll see in the last slide, Mr. Kieferman, if you would. Has it changed, Mr. Kieferman? I apologize, I can't see it.
Yep.
Yes, it changed.
Okay. Okay, as you can see, what's being proposed is a fifty-unit, single-family development. It would be realized as an R2 cluster. As I mentioned, adjacent properties are zoned R2 already. The design you're seeing here is a result of some conversations with staff. We were obviously hopeful of realizing some more units on the site. We originally went back to the drawing board, figuring that we would propose a sixty-unit plan, but frankly, doing this plan the right way yields the fifty units that you're seeing right here on this plan. And what's being requested this evening is merely an opportunity to move forward with this. And what move forward means is, if you would please, just authorize staff to send this up to county and get some county feedback on their thoughts regarding this design as opposed to the design that was on the table a little over a year ago, over a hundred townhouses, and give us an opportunity to come back to you for a public hearing on the rezone necessary to effectuate this plan. And at that point in time, we would bring with us a traffic engineer. I think what we're gonna be able to show you is that the traffic generated from this site is about ten percent of what would be generated from a commercial development on this parcel. We'll bring back to you a fiscal impact analysis, and we'll present, as is always the case on a rezone hearing, the expert testimony of civil design engineers, traffic engineers, and land planners. And the decision at that point in time, as you know, is wholly discretionary. All we're asking for is an opportunity to move forward, and as stated on this evening's agenda, merely authorize staff to send this proposal up to county and work with the applicant towards setting a date for a public hearing to consider the potential rezone, maybe sometime in September. And as I said, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and Mr. Tim Woodrow is also here, and frankly, I'm just not absolutely confident on who else is here with me this evening, but I know Mr. Woodrow is, and we're here to answer your questions.
Is it Mr. Woodrow? I've unmuted Mr. Woodrow.
Okay. Tim, is there anything else you wanna add to what I said? Any description of the plan that you think is important?
No, Joe, I think you did a good job kind of explaining the history as I know it.
Joe, we can't hear him, he needs to speak up. Tim?
I'm sorry, is that, is that better?
That's better.
Great, thanks. I was just saying that I think Joe has done a good job explaining the history as I am aware of it over the last number of weeks, years, and months. I do believe that the single-family home plan allows us to take advantage of the topography a little bit better than the larger attached units, and I think it does fit much better in with the community in relation to what is surrounding it. So, you know, obviously, we haven't designed anything yet, because it's very early in the process, and it would be presumptuous of us to do that, but I feel good about the possibilities of this plan moving forward.
So the road, there's still only one entrance and exit onto Ridge Pike, because that was sort of the problem before.
Yeah, you know, I was gonna mention to you procedurally, so that you understand, what, what Mr. Coles is asking for is the same thing that they asked for before. If you wanna change the zoning map or the zoning ordinance, you have to have a hearing to do it. Now, you have total discretion, because they're not challenging the validity of your current ordinance, they're just saying they want a different, a different zoning ordinance. So that's entirely up to you whether you wanna do it, and only if you think it is in their best interests. So the way that I would say it is, I guess if you hate it, you'll say no. If you like it, but you have some concerns, then, you know, they would have the benefit of the doubt, I think, to have a hearing, and you would address those concerns there, and that might include the ingress egress and the And that might include the ingress egress and the fact that there's only the one. I know in one of the prior iterations, we had spoken about, at least conceptually, whether they could get through on the other side and have another point of egress to Ridge from the side street over there.
Yep.
Joe or Tim can comment. I think that proved unworkable because it involved too much land that they didn't own to do that. Isn't that right, Joe?
Well, there's too much land that we don't own. A lot of it is developed. And what we did do and revise on the plan was, you see, as the entrance comes in, we stubbed the road off to the side for potential future development of abutting on that side. And the other thing I would point out to you is that there are limitations given the environmentally sensitive areas along Ridge Pike. But there is, if you look closely, an emergency access, which, I don't know how to describe it. If you look around the loop road, you'll see there's a break between two of the units. I don't know what the unit numbers are.
Yeah, Joe, that would be between units 35 and 36.
Okay.
It comes just to the east of a single-family home there. There's actually a little driveway on Ridge Pike today. You can see going back that way. So there is an easement that's back that way that we could convert, we feel, to that emergency access.
Yeah, we'd have to talk to your emergency service providers. But if emergency access was a concern, there is a point for emergency access at that location. But we don't see any further possibilities for any second access to the development in light of its configuration and location.
So, Mr. President, this is a request for a hearing. We've given them the cold shoulder on two occasions. Once, they presented 99 townhomes and we rejected the Northeast Philly look, complete with alleys. And then they came at a second time and, again, they got the cold shoulder. And it appears here that they've come back with a much more reasonable plan. So this is a request for a hearing. If we grant a hearing, they make their case. They discuss all the issues regarding traffic and impact on the township. And they can address the road. I know we just approved the shopping center, the Lidl that's built that has a provision for a road that would eventually meet up with this. So that can all be discussed, so.
There's no commitment on your part to giving them authority to have the hearing. You're just saying you're letting them make their fuller case.
Right. Personally, I'm okay with having a hearing, let them make their case. And then we could decide at or shortly thereafter the meeting if we think this is something that we would agree to allow to be built here.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I like the fact that there's far less units.
Right.
So do we need, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, but do we need to make a motion to authorize a hearing?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize and schedule a hearing, a public hearing on the property at 1701 Main Street.
A second, Ed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And you'll schedule that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next agenda item, consider authorizing advertisement of the MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan, which includes DEP comments.
Thank you. This is the five-year plan. It goes from 2018, fall of 18, through fall of '23. You adopted the Pollution Reduction Plan. This was in 18, late 18. DEP submitted comments to us in February of this year, '20. And those comments indicated they would like to see some more definitive statements in the plan as to the plan going forward. We had an option at that time, either a basin wetland area at Route 29 and 422, or if that, we didn't know if that was going to proceed through the process or not, or if you needed to do modifications to multiple facilities, existing facilities throughout the township. Those are the options that was presented in the plan. They stated they wanted a very specific option, which one we were going to go with. They also looked at the loading calculations. And they determined that there were some areas that they thought should be included, that we did not have included in terms of the loading. So the loading went up to the basin by about 10% from 53,000 pounds up to 58,000 pounds, slight increase in the basin size. And we're bringing forward a plan that would advertise the basin at Route 29 and 422 as the selected option. So that plan needs to be advertised for public comment. And then you would have a public hearing on the plan in September at your board's meeting. August, I'm sorry, if you're August board meeting, you'd have a public hearing on the plan. And then you would have the opportunity to adopt it at your September meeting to get it to the DEP by the end of September, which is the timeframe that they would like to see the plan resubmitted to their office. So tonight, we're asking just for you to be able to advertise the plan for public comment. And then we'll have a public hearing in August on the plan. And then we'll be looking for adoption of the plan in September, based on those comments. So it's just authorization to advertise the plan at this point.
Okay. Is there any questions?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we authorize advertisement of the MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan, which includes DEP comments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, on to manager and department head reports.
The only item on here is a waiver of fees. Chief Carrigan had recommended it as his firefighters get back into doing inspections of commercial buildings, which we charge a fee for in accordance with the fee schedule that the supervisors adopt annually. That is a gesture towards those businesses that we waive those inspection fees. The total revenue generated by that, by the inspections, if I recall correctly, is about $17,000, $18,000. So if the board were to agree to waive that, we would obviously see it drop to almost nothing for the calendar year 2020. But we wanted to bring it to the board's attention, see if that's something that you wanted to consider.
I'm not in favor of that.
So I just want to be clear, we're giving small businesses or businesses in our township a break that they don't have to pay for the fire inspection. Is that?
No, at present, we are charging them for those inspections that the firefighters are doing.
At present, right. But then we're saying we're going to waive it because of the situation we're in.
Correct.
And that a lot of businesses are hurt.
So we're still doing the fire inspections?
They ceased for a period of time during the height of COVID in the spring, but they are back at it.
Okay, so they are doing the fire inspections. We're just not charging for them.
No, we are charging.
We are, but there's.
I apologize in my hearing.
That's okay. The chief is recommending that we waive those for the rest of the year.
Waive those fees for the balance of the year. That's.
Okay, I have no problem waiving the fees. I just want to know if we're doing the inspections.
Yes.
We are doing the inspections.
Correct.
Good, good.
Well, we have a fee schedule. What is the inspection fee, if we know?
It varies based on the size of the tenant space.
So it could be big buildings, smaller buildings.
You got it. $50 to $250, maybe?
And part of the whole idea of having firefighters do the inspections is it helps to pay their salary. And, look, I understand we've had some COVID issues, but I don't believe that we should be waiving any fees. We're incurring expenses with our employees. And there are businesses that are operating that have, if they're having inspections, that they have work done, correct?
No, it's not permit-based work. It's fire prevention inspection. So, you know, they may go out to Wegmans or a tenant down on Egypt Road, stop at a warehouse and go out and do an inspection. It's not because they obtained a permit and are doing any construction-related work, just an annual or thereabout fire prevention inspection.
And we charge for that?
We do.
Yeah, I just think that that's part of the ways that we dedicate, when we hired firefighters to help offset their salary was to have them do the inspections and they would help to pay for some of their salaries, so.
And that's in part why the request is coming before the board. We wouldn't administratively just say, oh, poof, we'll make those fees disappear this year. The board set a resolution in place and, you know, as staff, we respect that.
How much would we, so half the year's done. Let's just say we said, okay, we're going to.
If we charge 100% and they continue to do inspections through the end of the year, maybe we would generate $9,000?
Okay, so that's what we're talking about. We're giving people, we're giving businesses in our township a $9,000 break for now.
Or for the period through the board, through which the board would waive it if you're inclined to do that.
I think we should extend it through the fall and then re-take a look at where we are.
Well, I'm okay with doing what Brian wants now, but, you know, we can address it again if you want.
How about we just waive them through the end of the year and then take it up in January? We feel like we need to continue it, but.
Exactly.
Honestly, I feel like the business, I know restaurants are probably hurting. And if we can give them a break, it's not that much.
Actually, it's a good service. It's good to have the firemen out there doing an inspection. It makes for safer establishments. People don't like when they come in, but it makes you, it makes your establishment safer. They find things that you overlook or you, an extension cord that runs from one side of your building to the other side of the building, you thought, oh, this is okay. But it's a good service. And they come in and they check your, to make sure that your exit signs are working properly. It's a good service. And I have no problem waiving that inspection fee.
I think it should be told so that it's clear when we turn it back on that there's no miscommunication. Do you know what I mean? Like, there should be some sort of expectation that we're going to communicate that. For right now with COVID, this is.
Yeah, I mean, if you were to do it, we'd ask you to set a date. And following the lapse of that date, we would reinstate the inspection fees.
I agree with it. You may not.
I'll go along. But I just think, you know, anytime you guys ask us to do something like this, we should know the number. Like, we should know this is the range of the, this is the range of the cost. Because I don't know what a cost is for the inspections. I know they can vary, but what are the variations?
So the total revenue generated by that program is about $17,000, $18,000 a year. Assuming they get to half of them, if the board doesn't waive it, that revenue line item will still be down by, you know, $9,000. If you waive it, it'll probably generate close to nothing for the balance of the year.
Yeah, it's about 100 to 120 for each inspection that they would save, the businesses.
I think they vary. The smallest tenant spaces, you know, real small restaurant, it might be about $50. I think they go on up to $200, $300, maybe, for a larger commercial tenant.
Okay, I think we should take your recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we waive the fire inspection fees for the remainder of the year 2020.
Second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, consultant reports.
I'd like to report that the Road A projects are complete.
Thank you.
Our projects are. And the road, which is, I think, the earliest they've ever been completed in the township that I can remember. The Road B segment from Delaware Valley is started. They started the demolition of curb ramps. And they're looking at paving in late August timeframe. So both projects went pretty smoothly or are going smoothly. The trail designs continue, River Crest Trail, Troutman Road Trail. And the sewer project designs continue with Spring Mill, Pleasant Lane, and Tindy Run. Any questions?
Solicitor or?
Nothing further.
Nothing? Jeff?
No.
Good, okay. All right, supervisors' comments. I wanted to read through something that our board responded to a county commissioner's recent comments on Black Lives Matter. And this was posted on our website and The Mercury and on social, our Facebook post. So I just wanted to make sure that I read it out. We all agreed to it and signed it. "Difficult times like these, given a global pandemic and civil unrest, give elected leaders the opportunity to rise above the fray and find a common way forward for their constituents." "And in contrast, on June 1st, Joe Gale, a Montgomery County elected commissioner, on official county letterhead, abused his elected office by broad-brushing rioters and protesters together in an attempt to delegitimize the protester's message of systemic discrimination and police brutality, perpetrate destructive stereotypes, and threaten peaceful protesters. These odious divisive comments do not reflect the values and commitment to an inclusive community that we strive to achieve here in Upper Providence Township. We will continue to work with Montgomery County Police Chiefs Association by condemning racial injustice and discrimination within our county. And we stand united with other representative townships and residents, as well as the Montgomery County Commissioners, in condemning Joe Gale's actions and statements, which violate the public trust granted through an election."
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment. I absolutely totally agree with what you just stated. And I think it's so important that public officials not endanger public safety or stir up problems when they need to be uniders. And to further that, and at our August meeting, we were going to consider a human relations ordinance, this board is, that will guarantee what I believe is a bedrock American value of equality and equal protection under law. And we are going to specify certain classes that cannot be discriminated against in public accommodation or public interaction in this township. And those are race, color, age, religious creed, ancestry, sex, who you love, national origin, or disability. And once again, we find ourselves at a crossroads in this nation where we must affirm this most basic of American values. I believe this represents the values of this board and the overwhelming majority of Upper Providence Township residents. And again, that will be considered at the August meeting of this board.
Thank you to both of you for those statements. I would like to recommend a few books, if you don't mind. One is Northanger Abbey by Jane Austen, Murder on the Links by Agatha Christie. Invention of Surgery by David Schneider. That's really quite interesting. Whole bunch of things brought together to that one that I think most of us never really think about on a day-to-day basis. And the other is The Keeper by Diane Saxon.
Anybody else? Okay, upcoming events. Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled July 29th at 7:00 PM. We have a workshop. It's the final presentation by the Library System Services. August 3rd at 7 o'clock, we have a conditional use hearings for 1021 Egypt Road and 357 Greenwood Road. August 17th at 7:00 PM is a regular supervisor meeting. There's a planning commission meeting scheduled July 22nd at 7:00 PM that's canceled. There's one August 12th at 7:00 PM. And that agenda would be Pope John Paul Bleachers. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting schedule is August 19th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee meeting schedule is August 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And Municipal Authority meeting schedule is August 6th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I'll make a motion for adjournment. Nothing more?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.